Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us on this nice spring evening, and we apologize for the slight delay. But thank you all for joining us this evening. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. There will be a public hearing on Thursday, April 29th at 7:00 PM. On the proposed renovation plans for Hindley Homes and Royal Elementary Schools. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, May 11th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. So again, thank you all for joining us. Thank you all for working through our remote week last year after break. I hope everyone had a good, safe break. I think the numbers overall were good last week, and as always, our goal is to have our students in school. First, I want to express our deepest sympathies to the family and friends of Scott Danskier, a former Darien High School student who passed away last week. Our thoughts and prayers are with his siblings who are part of the DHS community. We feel this loss is a community in this challenging year, and we'll support the family, friends, and school community in any way we can. Please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. I know Principal Dunn has sent out a note, and we'll continue to work with the Darien High School community around supporting the family and the friends of the Darien High School and the Danskier family. Couple of words here that come to mind over the last week or so and day, sun, warm weather, theater, sports, music, concerts, graduations, summer vacations, and college visits. I think I would like to replace and use these words instead of Corona, COVID-19, Fauci, CDC, quarantine, contact tracing, and vaccinations. Let's see if we can switch those words out. While we have made incredible progress as a community, we must continue to be optimistic but smart in the way we go about our daily lives. The virus is still with us. So we must continue to ask everyone to remain smart and continue to be respectful as we continue to open back up into more of a normal daily routine. Our goal as a district continues to be students in school, outdoor and indoor activities with spectators, all with smart community guidelines and respect in providing safety for all. We'll hear more about this in our discussion around school opening with Dr. Adley, and we'll continue to have this discussion about doing the right thing for our community and our students. With that, I will turn it over to Dr. Public Comment, Michelle.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participant icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raised hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face, name, and/or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comments. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment. There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. The only other comment I will add to that I have a bullet here is to say congratulations, number one high school in Connecticut in New York News and World Report. I'm sure we'll hear more about that, if not this evening, in the coming days, but incredible accomplishment by our students, our teachers, and administrators, the district, volunteer board, and our parents. It's a great honor for all the hard work everyone does and all the hard work over this incredibly challenging year. So I look forward to hearing more about that. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us, and we were excited to welcome back our students to school this week. And we thank our community, both our teaching staff and our parent community for their support during their week of remote learning. And at this point, we're hopeful that we don't have any other disruptions the whole way through the end of the school year here. We're excited to have the kids back. We're excited as a staff to be back. We're excited that as a board chair, in a thoughtful way, start to get a wee bit back to normalcy, and it's we're trying to provide some of those experiences for our students. So welcome back, everyone. And again, it's just tremendous to have the schools filled again. As the board chair said, congratulations on the high school and being named number one high school in the state. That's a recognition of the entire school system pre-K to 12th. And it's a recognition of particularly of our students' capabilities and the tremendous capabilities of the staff. There's only one picture, right, and an important picture of the excellence of programming that we provide our kids in all of areas from academics, athletics, extracurricular, co-curricular activities. But it's an important one, and I would say just in this particular year, just past year, given the challenges that we've had, it's particularly nice to hear that particular recognition. So again, and I would say to the high school staff in particular, congratulations to both our staff and students on the achievement. But again, as the board chair says, it's also reflective of the entire community from Board of Education to parents, the collective commitment here of commitment to academic excellence and quality programming. So congratulations again. The interview process is well underway. Thank you to the parents and staff members who have been involved in the process. Elementary finalists, AP finalists, will be next week, and we're beginning the screening process for elementary principals. And we have two finalists for the middle school principal position. So there's a lot of interviewing and processing, human resource processes going on. This past week, we celebrated the important work of our administrative professionals across the district. May 1st, we celebrate the work of principals, and then we have the annual appreciation for the work of our teaching staff on May 3rd for Teacher Appreciation Week. Technology plan is being refined. It's coming together nicely. So it will be, it was originally scheduled for the first week in May. It'll be the second week in May that it comes through the board, but it didn't do shake, and so we're things looking forward to be able to present that. Excuse my mash and maul. It's just following on me. Also, the get-to-evaluation, the program is underway also, so that is coming together nicely and beyond schedule for the June presentation through the board. Vaccination clinics, you know, you've heard about the 16-plus, and been able to offer those to our students. The number of students, I think some families have been understandably taking advantage of other opportunities to get vaccinated. So there was discussion today that they'll be providing vaccinations for younger students. So we'll see what happens there at the State Department of Public Health. That was a message that they had this morning. District testing is up and running, and particularly next week, we have everything from S-Backs going on to NGSS at the various schools. This week in particular with the middle school. So we, at that time of the season again, I have to say I'm not a big proponent of the testing for this particular year, given everything that's gone on, but there is no exception for that, and so we're up and running with that particular testing. Just an update on the coffee center and the relocation of that. We have, we will be going to planning zoning on May 4th. We have asked for it to be on the RTM meeting following that on June 21st, and as the board chair said, we have a public hearing. And it's coming up on 30, and information for public hearing has been posted, I think, this afternoon.
That concludes the night. Thank you, Dr. Adley. Approval of minutes. May have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on April 7, 2021, and the minutes of the regular meeting held on April 7, 2021. May have a motion, Mrs. Ritchie, a second, Mr. Maroni. All those in favor? That is unanimous. One abstention. Yep, John wasn't here. Pretty good.
Going to clarify, that's eight yeses and one abstention?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to Board Committee and Reports. Yeah, Dave came to the meeting. You came. You were.
Which one? The one before I was 15 minutes late. That one was not present, but you were here. But we've been through this, but we could approve that it's without being present?
Yes, that's good. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Any Board Committee or Reports? Just a quick update. We did have an Oxbridge kind of update. We have a bi-weekly with the construction management team. It continues to be on schedule, which is exciting. In this past Monday, steel was being delivered, so that's exciting. I have a meeting this Friday. We are trying to organize kind of a progress groundbreaking type ceremony. We hope to do that sometime in June, where maybe we can have more people in attendance from a distancing and mask standpoint to celebrate the progress of that school and where we are now. So, but things continue to move on schedule with the building of the Oxford Elementary School. With that, we'll move on to presentations and discussions, and we'll move to Dr. Adley and the Darien Public School status update.
So these are a couple of topics for this evening's discussion around the status. Just as a reporter today, we have no cases today. We had no cases over the weekend, so that sort of sets the scene for the COVID metrics. They have been decreasing, so that has been encouraging. And they've been increasing across, decreasing across the state and also within kind of Darien. This is this is the chart that we have for the school system as part of the packet. This is the 22nd, and this is as of yesterday, 26th. So you can see that we certainly have less cases and less people being quarantined. This is the, this is as low as it's been for a while. Connecticut and the actual perfume painting. And there's the local has dropped significantly and continues to drop. So those are encouraging signs, and as the board chair said, it's important that we continue to just not let our guard down along the way, but those are definitely signs that we would like to see and getting back to some normalcy and hopefully no disruptions henceforth moving forward. I'll just go back a little bit here. Certainly come to anything. The vaccination claims, actually, just alluded to the vaccination clinic, so of for seniors and also for 16 and above, and the state again is going to roll out, and I suggest rolling out vaccinations for younger students. So we'll see if that transpires and how quickly that information comes to the table. Spectator policy, there was enough buzz around about spectator policy this past weekend. I appreciate members of the community who worked with the high school and administration in terms of working through this particular weekend. We will be opening up effective immediately the high school or the spectator policy. I certainly don't want a free-for-all, right, where where it is bad and it looks bad, but there's a lot, certainly with the governor's messaging about being able to go to amusement parks and being able to go to ball games and so on and so forth. And we still have some rules that apply to the school system, though, that the Department of Public Health is very clear on, but regarding opening up certainly the 50% capacity with, I mean, honestly, with the social distance, and I think with the mask, and actually, that social distancing is such a critical component of this, but I think we have to be reasonable about it. And counting the high school stadium, there's about 18, you can get more in, but there's about 1,800 people you can probably get in there with social distancing. But essentially, you'll be opening up, right? Essentially, you're going to be opening that up as long as it's it's the same as any particular year, as long as everybody is following expectations that we have to do. At this point, you have to wear masks. If that changes, we certainly had the CDC went out and commented on the use of masks and so on and so forth. The Connecticut Department of Public Health also have to opine on that, as well our health professionals, if the messaging changes for graduation or for on campus, for instance, as of this morning for graduation, it's open as long as we can distance and all if you wear your mask, and you're going to accommodate the space for people. So clearly in-person graduation, we'll be doing that. That has always been the case anyway, but but they've really sort of confirmed that there will still be masks. It will be required to be worn. So at this point, for for spectators, we'll be trying to manage it. I just think, I just ask people to be sensitive to the needs of sort of managing to some degree. But once you go to like, say, 1,800, then you're really opening up essentially for the most part. And certainly, the high school have the opportunity this week to talk to the kids and talk about that and message to that, and and I think for the most part, we're talking about the big games, right? But it applies to all sports. So we'll be opening it up effectively immediately where essentially, I don't want to say it's completely unlimited, because it's not unlimited in any given day anyway, right? I mean, you have to some safety requirements around it, but but it's open to people. If you want me to talk through this, I'll talk through them all, and then we can circle back.
Well, do you want to pause? Let's pause. There's certain topics here I think we can talk through, and then there's others that there might be some more questions. So I'll pause there. I think the the vaccination clinics and the metrics are good. I think there was a lot of community dialogue, a lot of sensitivity around end of year, our seniors, sports and participation, and celebrating their success and getting to watch, you know, your individual children participate. So I'll open it up for from board questions and comments around spectator policy. Mr. Seeny.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were talking about other issue that we had discussed as well. I'm not, I don't have a specific spectator.
Oh, okay, okay. Go ahead with your questions.
I was going to focus on the quarantine issue and just the general top-down focus that this district has taken. I applaud what we've done in the past and use kind of local data to guide us, and I think, you know, the spectator policy is the perfect example of that. But, you know, in some cases, we've taken account CDC recommendations, but, you know, moved forward, given the limitations of the physical plant buildings, and I, you know, the three-foot decision probably was not an easy one at the time. But you went forth, and we, you know, our students definitely benefited. This district benefited from in-person learning because we looked past that recommendation. So when I look at the quarantines, and you just do basic math, you know, we've had 27,000 student days or staff days. If I just take 10 times the number of individuals that have been impacted. But what's truly concerning is those individuals, especially those students that have had the quarantine multiple times. And if there is a way, I mean, this is a request, but also, you know, we brought this up in the past, to relook at that seven-day option, now that these numbers are actually going down and probably more manageable from a administrative standpoint, but but look at that seven-day option again, especially for those students that are facing multiple quarantines. I mean, again, seven versus 10 days in one instance doesn't seem like a lot, but then you multiply that by three times, and you talk about another nine or 10 days, that that particular student might have been saved and been able to attend class. So I don't know if you're prepared to talk about that now, or if you have to go back to our student health reps, but if it's a management issue, let's get on top of that. We can find volunteers or hire people to run spreadsheets to ensure that we're doing it right, but I think it's really important as we close out this year to pursue that option.
I don't think it's a management issue, as you're saying. As I've seen, I don't think it's a management issue. Certainly, the number of children who are quarantined, because actually, for anybody who's been quarantined period, but then also to quarantine twice or three times. If I look at the high school and middle school, right, just in general, right, not don't quote me, but basically around 9 or 10% of the kids have been quarantined at least twice, right? It's probably 1 to 2% have been quarantined three times. And then maybe at Oxbridge, there's been a school, a class has been quarantined a couple of times on the track, which has been difficult. So I understand that. We have had this discussion a number of times, and Alicia, by the way, she'd say Alicia would ordinarily be here, but she's at a celebration ceremony for her daughter, and Honors has had it, so I said, go, all right, that's important. But we've had this discussion both with Alicia and also our health professionals around the 14 days, the 10 days, the seven days. The original reason we did, we stuck to the 10 days, was essentially, we were still seeing people who were were needed, who were COVID after the five to 10 days, and that's been a, so that's kind of why we have done that. This past weekend, we just had were able to reduce the sports to 10 days, because that's just been released. So as these things change, we'll certainly look at them. I'm happy to revisit that. I'm happy to revisit anything on our weekly meetings with our health professionals around that question. So I'm happy to pose that question again.
Could I just follow up with one?
Yes, Mr. Seeny.
And then in those conversations, I mean, I'd love to know the social emotional element that, you know, that their physical health experts are measuring here, because it comes at a toll. And, you know, again, these cumulative days and these cumulative, you know, this accumulation of depressions and stresses of this. I just want to make sure that those physical health experts are also looking at, you know, the mental toll it's taking on some of these kids.
So we have taken into consideration that those making both the social emotional and I'll just call overall educational cost benefit, and along the way, we have made, as you rightly pointed out, some difficult decisions that are not easy decisions to make in the sense of not just health and wellness, but the actual educational loss and social emotional loss. The State Department of Education has those questions, but, and they're looking at rolling, sort of developing or rolling out some model for measurement around social emotional learning, but that that's always part of the discussion that there's there's wins, losses, and these things, and I said a terrible thing. But we certainly, we're certainly, certainly looking at the 360 picture, for Miss Seeny, and yeah, I appreciate, again, I appreciate the advocacy around those particular reasons, but this and they're tremendously important, both over the summer and also as we start next year. But I'm always happy to revisit an issue, because we have those making meetings, and that's what they're for.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Ritchie.
So I'll just echo Mr. Seeny's comments. If we feel there's a way that we can look at that, address it, maybe fall into that seven-day test-out option, I'm supportive of any resources you need to be able to do that. I think from my perspective, people are getting vaccinated. We have teachers who are vaccinated. I just want to give the students the best experience they possibly can get for the last few weeks, several weeks that we're here in school, and whatever we can do to give that to them. I think they've been through so much. We all have this past year or so, and I just feel like if there's a way that we can improve upon that, I'm supportive of exploring that.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Mr. Brown.
Just a brief comment on the athletic policy. I'm very pleased to see Darien was ranked number one in the state. I would suggest that perhaps our enthusiasm and support for our student athletes and other extracurricular participants is also number one in the state. So I think, given the year we've had and everybody being cooped up more or less, I think it's really important that they now have the opportunity to be outside. Wonderful news that the CDC is suggesting get rid of masks, and so it's wonderful news to hear that we're going to be supporting and allow spectators to come in full and participate and take part. So that's great news. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Ackman.
So I agree, and I'm glad to hear that we can have our students attend our athletic events, but it begs the question, what about things like the play, which were limited to parents or just two tickets, or graduation, or the prom, or we've told seniors like no dates? Are we opening that up as well? You know, are we making sure that the kids have experiences in other ways? And we're applying that equally, if we can have 1,800 people on campus and they follow mask wearing, why would we limit things like, and don't get me wrong, I know the day of the play off the top of my head, why would we limit things like the play?
I don't have the date off the top of my head either.
Yeah, so why would we limit the play, or why would we limit prom, or why would we, if we're trying to really give kids a sense of belonging and experience to kind of the social emotional well-being of kind of feeling part of a community?
So we would, we would provide the opportunity for live audience, as many as we possibly could, I mean, given the venue where we're actually going to have it.
Okay, so I think, so maybe whatever I do is careful, because I think it was kind of like an all seniors, just like the athletic currently was, like two parents, all seniors. I think the seniors have been told, just seniors, you can't bring a date. Like, I just think, if, I think there's real value in this, so we should look at it both in our sporting events and our arts events and our kids' experience.
I want to, I want to share that the high school administration are open to our advocate, and they want they want our students back at these events. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, that that's their goal too, to have the students back at the events, and certainly, we would look at, we've ruled out that they're going to be, and I think this is tremendously important, that some of the arts and the theater and so on and so forth are going to be outside, and look, some of it's a wee bit iterative, that we announced that it's going to be outside, and there's going to be an audience, and the next thing we know is that we can increase that, and we'd look at opportunities to have as many people as possible.
So I guess from a board, a board standpoint, what I'm asking is, we look at things holistically. I think the idea that kids need a sense of belonging and need to kind of get back to their normalized is real and is tangible. And so I want to make sure that extends to the arts, to the senior experiences, to the sports, because high school is holistic. And so what I would hate to do is just through losing through cup and the lip, I think the show's a memorial day. Not anybody hold me to this, but like all of a sudden say, well, only seniors can do. Like their siblings, and there's grandparents, and there's, so I guess I just ask that the administration take a fresh look at these events in light of the new guidance and not be limited only to the ovals.
That's fine, and, yeah, and actually, they did learn, we did learn something from this past weekend in terms of being able to manage an event, how many people actually show up, people actually respond to requests of trying to be social distance and trying to do the right thing. So there's a learning there that we took away and are able to put in place. But yes, yeah, and your advocacy, because I appreciate how those other areas. I will say, just since it's outside, so to speak, I think it was a question come up just about are the children getting outside? The high school is, it's the tent, there'll be a tent, the middle school, a tent at the middle school primarily for classes to go outside. High school is for lunches. Elementary are pushing out particularly over the next week or so. Some have already been pushing out, but there's more in terms of lunches, recess time to get outside. They're not necessarily requesting or needing tents. It's a wee bit warmer weather, it's not inclined to rain so much in that regard, so, but they are pushing out for lunches and for recesses and for mask spray. So that's just to give you an idea.
Mrs. Ritchie.
That was one of the things that I had messaged you about, just now that the weather's getting better and wherever there's an opportunity to push things outside as much as possible, and if we need more tents, let's get more tents. I would love to see masks come off the children when they're outside, if this is possible, and we can safely do it. So I just would advocate from my perspective for more of that, because we know getting it outside is good for them, and it's good for all of us, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. I would just add to what Mrs. Ackman said, and it's always, you know, the focus this past weekend was sports. I hear there's great things going on from the music standpoint, concerts and theater. But I think from a communication standpoint, let's make sure it's holistic, it's all-inclusive. I, I think, from what I hear, there's a lot of creative thoughts going around, but let's be as creative as possible. If music can move outside, or theater can do something outside, like theater out on the field, let's make sure all those options are explored. If it's not feasible, or there's a rain or weather issue, then let's be clear in the capacity at the gymnasium, or the capacity of the theater is X, and here's why, just so people understand. I think sometimes some of the decision-making, you know, people want to always understand the process, and I think sometimes people don't get a clear understanding of how the decision came to be. The CDC, the Health Department, everything changes pretty much weekly. So I think if we can communicate as effectively as possible about the why we're doing it somewhere, and also use the resources that we have, and I think we all say it around here all the time, like, let us know the resources that you need. We should have the best open outdoor spring celebration, graduation for students, and students moving up from different schools as possible with the year that everyone has gone through. So creativity, what do the schools need? You know, how do we make the students feel good about each other, and how do we support the community? I think that's what, you know, I think the sense that I've gotten from speaking to board members and from speaking to the community is the numbers look good. We want to make the decisions based on what we feel are the right decisions for the community, for our students, for our teachers, for the administration, for our parents. But let's make those decisions with understanding all that they've lost, all that they need, and all that we want to do for them, so.
I would trust that you would think we were doing that, but that's just, but
I'm not saying you're not doing it, but I want to reinforce it. I want to make sure, I think, I'll be honest, I think we stumbled from a communication standpoint. Okay, I'm going to be honest, because that's the way I am. We stumbled from a communication standpoint around the sports and the around the outdoor activities. That's fine. All right, it's been a challenging, difficult year, and at the end of the day, everyone is trying to do the right thing, but we need to do a better job from a communication standpoint.
So I think given that it was, that was kind of my point I was making, when I see spectator policy, I guess what I'm asking is it's it's across the board, right? And not to a home, but like right now, I know National Honor Society is planning to Zoom for their celebration in June. That makes sense, why they planned to Zoom. But maybe now that we can do things outside, maybe a fresh look at that would be good. The high school is trying to do a great job with things like prom and give the kids experience, maybe given the change in restrictions, we, we take a fresh look at that. To Mr. Senior's point, I think a lot of these kids really are looking to be part of something and they have been isolated for the year. And I know you know that, I know the high school knows that, but I think as a board, what we're saying, we will support fresh looks at old, old is a weird word, at practices this year, given we have new information. And I think that goes across the board to what we're all, we're just asking the administration to do because we're feeling it from the.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Mr. Brown?
I agree that this conversation really deals with all extracurricular activities. But I just want to focus on one point, which is athletics, as well as any other action, are really important in this community. And that's something that the board needs to convey to the staff in any time that, you know, we have an opportunity, because that is important. We want to make sure that, you know, town's values are reflected what we do with our students. And that applies not just athletics, but to other extracurriculars. And so that's something I'm happy to repeat again and again, because I think that is something, and one of the things that leads Darian's position where it is.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Richie? Okay, Mrs. McCann?
Alan, you mentioned that about nine to ten percent of the, of the students have been quarantined, at least twice. I was curious to know, thank you first off for the data, I was curious to know if you have a sense of whether or not that's evenly distributed. And I asked that in part because I'm wondering with the vaccines of children or students, excuse me, who are sixteen and older, if there's some opportunities to look at quarantine, well, quarantining at the high school in particular with an increased number of kids who are vaccinated.
I would actually have to look at, I would have to ask Alicia to look at the data before maybe look closer just to give you you know, a more specific answer to that.
The second, thank you, the second part of the question I probably is actually separate, which is whether or not there's any discussion locally or at the state level about the impact of vaccines on quarantine policy, since I know it would be somewhat difficult to figure out who's been vaccinated and not, but we have to do it for the teaching staff anyway. And so if there's any opportunities to look at quarantining around students and vaccines.
So specifically quarantine and go ahead.
Yeah, so if students have been vaccinated, then perhaps they, even if they were in proximity, they would not need to quarantine.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I think Alicia said at the last meeting that if you're two weeks post vaccination student or staff.
Okay.
Yes, 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 I just wondered what, yes, yes. Thank you, Mrs. McCann. I would just say, and that's not being defensive, okay, I just, but I just, like, I, I, I understand, Mr. Brown certainly understands that the nature of the importance of athletics, right? No one's going to advocate more than athletics in many ways, right? But but the health and safety of the population or community is always my first priority. And I look at with that land, but, but I certainly hear everybody who's talking on the table about their wishes, desires, and we're not on different pages with the wishes and desires. Absolutely not, but, but I appreciate your comments and input, it's helpful.
Mrs. Richie?
Well, what I'm saying is feel free to pivot, like if, if, if things are better and you can make things better for the students, I, I support that. So I think from the board perspective, we're adapt, we can adapt, you know, adjust as we go along to make the experiences better for everybody, and we support that.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of, perhaps you're seeing the two, and I would say, there's a lot of COVID fatigue going on, right? And there's a lot of things changing, mixed messages, and how can you do this? But like, and our, our schools are being held to, I would say, different sort of standards, and yet it's sort of contradicting whenever the least spread is meant to help in schools, so we got all of that going on in the mix, I think. But, but again, I hear your.
I don't think it's wishes and desires though. I think what we're, what we're trying to impress is that we have faith in the administration, we have faith, but we're also kind of the conduits of the community that if a fresh look, if a pivot, if new information or guidelines become available, we will support that, because at some point we know a pivot is coming, or we hope it is. And similarly, we would support a pivot back if the data or the information did that, because we all believe the health and safety of our children. It's such a busy year though, that it's understandable sometimes certain areas get highlighted. And again, I'm just looking for a holistic approach to be applied, but, but it's not, it's not really a wish or desire more than let's let the data direct us where we need to go for kids.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Mr. Maroney?
I would like to echo that, is I think as much as we all have COVID fatigue, I also think there's COVID optimism, that people are vaccinated and the numbers are going down and we have the lowest, including the number of people quarantined, we have the lowest, lowest number of remote learners now that we've ever had. So I think there's optimism as well, and I think to Mrs. Ackman's point, I think we went into this school year with the words flexible and, and there was another F, there were four Fs, or fluid and flexible. And I hope we come out of this, and as we're coming out of this, to use those, that same agility to be fluid and flexible and how do we pivot or, or modify or whatever we want to do and change the plans we've had for the last year and change it into a new process coming out.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroney. Mrs. Richie?
Can I just ask about the remote learners and just shift gears a little bit? We're at a very low number, are we seeing a lot of families choose to switch back to in-person from remote learning?
That number is especially low because it reflects last week. So that is the number of students who would have been remote even if we were fully in-person, if that makes any sense. So that just reflects the families that are still fully remote at this time with no quarantines.
Any further board questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. Brown?
A little bit of a change in topic, has there been any change to the cleaning efforts in school now that, you know, the numbers have gone down a little bit, are we, and the more we know about the virus, that it's not necessarily spread by contact, is there any change to our process there?
Certainly for next year, that the there's not the need or desire to do the amount we're doing this particular year. I think we'll bank up a little bit, can you confirm it for me?
We're still doing the weekend cleaning, and we still have part-time custodians here doing like touch surfaces, whether it's elevator buttons or handrails. We're not planning on having that weekend cleaning going forward after school year. So that would really be.
Good. Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Yes, go ahead.
I have another question.
Sure.
This is back on your point about communication and not necessarily related to COVID, but I would love for your Friday communication to have a clarification of the end of school dates for each school, because I've had multiple conversations with people that are very confused about, or maybe you could just say them now, when, when is the last day of school for each school?
All right, so, oh, all right. So we can.
Say jump, sorry.
We can communicate that each school has its end of year, sort of like the end of year ceremonies. So each school can communicate the actual dates, we have the dates, right? They are set with main dates and so on, so I'll be happy to communicate that. But each school then will be sent like also the specific dates, and they have those, they have those delineated at the moment. Including, since we're talking about this, sort of end of year ceremonies. The high school for graduation is, again, you heard today, there's the bike, let's open that up basically, right? So that's a good thing, and that lets that, that lets that go ahead and be completed. You know, about the prom, the eighth grade is having an eighth grade picnic and also an eighth grade certificate ceremony by team and cohort. I think there was some question about that. The elementary schools are doing their field days, they're moving up ceremonies. And the card rates, so they're continuing that, they're continuing that, that, well, there's a new addition now. So there are, all the dates are sort of set by each school, and I'll be happy to get the principles to the standard, but to be.
I think that would be helpful, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Mr. Brown? You could, we could, thank you, okay, good. I would ask just as, any other questions or comments around the updates relative to anything that's up there? Yes, Mrs. Ackman?
For teaching and learning.
Yes, so, yes, so I'll just, I'll just complete a couple of things, quite like Chris said, but the other ones. The remote learners. So just as of, right, just after late this afternoon, the state department issued that they think that we do not have to provide remote learning for students for next year. So that's just out of the plate. I'll just share with you, I've been an advocate of not requiring it for each, for school districts. Certainly, remote learning as options and stuff is like anything else can be considered and but the idea of requiring it, so that allows us to move forward with a significant plan. And I will say, the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two that I have up here really sort of speaks to that a little bit. I would like at the next board meeting to bring forward potential expenditures associated with next year. And also potential to continue the discussion about some of the things that we might be doing. When I say expenditure, I'm just talking about particularly the rescue act fund of some things that we, we might be looking, request to actually use, so as we look forward to the next school year and planning, that's a big thing that felt today, that there will be no remote learning option, so that helps us move forward and plan, but I'd like to bring forward and have a discussion just about potential opportunities that might exist and need to have been identified as forward.
Mr. Brown?
Just a question, we're having a change in the remote learner policy, does that have changes to the curriculum at all? As you look forward?
No, it just, it just means that we don't, we are not required to have to provide the option for people to learn at home, essentially.
Thank you.
And with that, I'm happy to turn over for the teaching and learning update.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Adley mentioned, we started Sback testing this week at middle school, and we will continue on to our elementary schools next week. We do plan to get score reports in June, as we always do, but they remain embargoed. But June is an important timeframe for us, because that's when we start our curriculum planning for the following year. And the score reports, what they will look like, we actually reached out to the state again today to find out. Well, since we don't have an accountability index and we're not getting all of the information we usually get, how might we inform parents what that will look like? And they said they, they don't have information to share with that yet. The important thing to know, I'm sure you've become aware that not only do students get a score, but they get a growth index. So what has been in conversation is will we still see a growth index for students that did not test next year? And last year? And the answer to that might be yes, they might use, so say our current fifth grade students, they'll do a growth index score based on their third grade performance to determine that. So I think they're still crunching numbers to see if they can give us reliable data there. One of the exciting and promising things, I think this is a promising thing. Students can take the test remotely, Sback and GSS, but we provided an option, just like we have all year, to have a remote testing center. But there are too many students to test remotely here, so the middle school opened up two of their gyms, and of their fifty-five students who are current full-time remote learners, forty-four of them came in to test. So that's a it's the strange, it's just one of those strange things that sounds exciting, but I think it's exciting nonetheless, that people feel safe coming back into the buildings, and that's certainly a first important step. I think I mentioned I met with all of our elementary grade level leaders a few weeks back before spring break, and I released a survey to them today to try to catch some of that information. I call it now my favorite question, I think every single person in the room has asked me this, and I, I know Ms. McCann has asked it several times, especially since we've been on strategic planning, is the what have you learned as a result of COVID? I tried to reframe that as what are some of the things you've changed that you'll keep on, keep on doing after COVID? And several of you were in CDSB when I got asked the question again of what have you learned as a result of COVID? So I've been thinking about that quite a bit, and I came across a great article, and instead of talking about learning loss, the author titled the article "A Found Year", to talk about what did we learn and the things that we never want to return to with normal. And the author framed it with four things that we've learned. And these are big ideas, but I think they're four important buckets for us to think about. And that's how to use time differently, how do we use physical space and places differently? How do we group students differently and flexibly? And how do we actually prioritize curriculum? This has been the first time that I feel like we've had permission to actually prioritize curriculum, even though you've heard it said for years and years that everything is a mile wide and an inch deep. This has been, you have no choice, now you really do have to go deep what's most important. So it really just echoed what I've been trying to articulate, is some of those big lessons learned. And that was a great thing to come across. The other piece that are the reoccurring themes and what we're seeing in the conversations with teachers, and we'll repeat this process with our secondary teachers as well, is the importance of relationships and SEL. This topic came up quite a bit this evening, but enhanced physical activity as research is coming in, that is an incredibly important part in restoring the normalcy of schools, so we should think about more opportunities for that next year. And students' perception of their own ability and feeling good about going to school, which we've, we've come to note to call self-efficacy quite a bit. So that's where I'm working with the teachers to reframe how we're going to approach curriculum, and as I said, our actual performance data is coming in as it has in the past with our benchmark assessments. So I'm optimistic there. When looking at our summer programming, I did mention that we have those extra courses that we added in for grade level bands of students in one, two, three, four, five, six. Enrollment in general is low at summer school right now, but nothing alarming. We have six hundred and ninety students enrolled across courses, and that's filling one thousand one hundred and forty-two seats, and we have two hundred and twenty-two different courses, which are mostly enrichment in nature. And the programs start on the twenty-eighth, and we have five-week programs, some run five weeks, some run one week, as you know how it works. But those classes specifically for those new classes that we added, we only have two students, six students, three students enrolled in those. So if anyone needs more information on those, I'll make sure I send something out to principals so they can include that in their regular communication. The more important part, and I'm on a broken record on this, is those enrichment types of of activities. That's, that's an important place to focus energy.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Mrs. Parent?
Can you send us that article?
Sorry?
Can you send us that article?
Yes, absolutely. Mrs. Ackman?
Since those growth indices are different at the secondary level, and there's not standardized testing yearly there, how are we doing, are we are we looking at, I'm not, I guess I'm going to have to say this. Are we looking, how are we looking at growth, our own self-assessments or I guess my question is, are we looking at growth? And how are we adjusting based on the growth we see?
So growth at the secondary level sometimes gets mixed up with grades.
And that's what I was trying to separate, I'm not talking about grades.
And I, I think it's important to separate that. And so similar to what we've done at the elementary level is what teachers have done at the secondary level and really focused on the standards. And they've adapted their assessments to focus on those standards that are most important. When we think about what are the, what are the measures that we look at upon exit? We look at how students did under PSAT, we look at those SAT scores. So we'll certainly use that as more of a landing point and a growth index. But just comparing students from between cohorts and within cohorts, as we've always done, I think we'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Chris, you mentioned the article earlier, you talk about curriculum going from a mile wide and inch deep, really going in depth. Do you have an example or an illustration just to try and show how that concept works in practice?
In general, one of the things that we did across many elementary units, so there's a, there's a long unit that often occurs on, say, measurement and math. And you don't necessarily need to stop everything you're doing to focus on measurement. You can embed measurement within other things that you're doing. So we put some of those units and infused them and incorporated them that way, so we actually stay, stay deep and really strengthening students' number sense and not pressing pause on those skills that we know are so important and foundational to the next unit. That would be one concrete way.
Mrs. McCann?
I have a couple of questions about summer school. The first one is, have we looked at the enrollment data to see if most of the enrollment is the usual suspects? Because I assume we have a number of kids who tend to enroll year over year, or whether or not there is actually a new cohort of students who are enrolled. My second question is, I, since the governor Lamont's announcement of some grants around summer school, I don't know whether they apply to our situation, but are you able to speak to them briefly?
It's relatively fresh off the press, so I don't know if Rich has looked into those at all, I know Sherri, we've talked about them too, so maybe a little bit of information, but I'm not sure how much.
I can share the information, good evening, everyone, nice to see. I can share information, we just applied for a grant from the Bureau of Special Education, Department of Connecticut for a twenty thousand dollar grant that we applied for, for ESY services. We've changed our grouping size, we've looked at different alternatives to be compliant, so hopefully we'll receive that grant. We applied today.
And there are.
Keep posted.
There are other pathways to Caitlin Stanton, who runs her summer school. She's reviewing that too, to see if we might be eligible for other funds there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCann. Mrs. Ritchie.
I'm wondering if you could just touch on any programming that we're going to have this year for DSS that is focused on more social emotional type things rather than the the academic. Is there anything that we're offering our students? That Ridgefield's doing something interesting, and I don't know if you've heard about it, this bridge summer, this bridge program that they they started. It was just very intriguing to me because it really focused not so much on the academics, but more on let's try to get some of the interaction and social experiences that our students have been missing. So I'm wondering if there's anything that we are offering at our summer school, something similar to that.
I would say most of our offerings are that. So we have Harry Potter courses, we have fun with fairy tales, we have tons of things that take place outdoors. So those are well in place and and have been and will continue to be. So personally, when I talked to Caitlin last week, I asked her, why is this carry on summer school? This is more like Darian enrichment academy. It's mostly an enrichment program for students that is, I don't know what you think of when you hear summer school, but when I was in school and I heard summer school, it just meant it meant something, something specific. You know, and and so it it might need a rebrand or a rename, because if when you look at what we're actually offering, it's just really rich opportunities for kids to have fun and not repeat classes that they have that they failed, because that's what summer school was to me when I was a kid.
Right.
It's anything but that.
I think as as much as we can push that out so people understand that, because like you said, going to school in the summer doesn't sound very appealing, but our students have missed so much in terms of experiences. So if there's some way to give them that experience.
Yeah, if we're looking for opportunities for kids to have time together in areas that they care about, those programs are full of tons of opportunities. Two hundred and twenty.
Thank you. Mrs. McCann.
Still on summer school, I know that there's an opportunity to apply for financial aid, but was any consideration given to just offering it to kids who might need it or just offering some places without necessarily having to go through that process? There might be kids who or families who might not apply, but might not choose, but might make that choice before going through the process. Or families who just wouldn't necessarily spend the money but might benefit anyway.
We haven't discussed that yet. They would want anyone to access the course that wants to to access it for sure. And we can certainly look to see what some options are there, but they should reach out certainly to Caitlin.
Okay, perhaps when principals send it back out, we should be very clear that we really want anyone who feels they could benefit to reach out to the office. Because I think you know, families, we might have some families who really might be in need. Thank you.
Mr. Tranberg, do you know what's a good enrollment number for summer school in a regular year?
I don't have that. I haven't seen the regular year yet, but but I've been told not to worry.
Good. No, and I think to the point of the the questions and the comments, it's good to have the conversation here. You made a nice presentation at CDSB the other day. So any way we can get the word out or get the word out locally and whatever resources you need, please let us know. Because I think, look, there's a lot of people that probably just want to get out of Dodge, go away and relax and breathe some fresh air over the summer. But for those people that are here or thinking about what their children may need, let's make sure they they all understand the great opportunities that are being created for them for the summer. Mrs. Parent.
Just to add on to that, I think the messaging of what you're saying is that our children are meeting benchmark and the news that it's good what's what's been happening, even though, you know, everyone, not everyone, a lot of people talk about the loss of a year and oh, what an awful thing this has been. I think if we can message it actually, it's not, it hasn't been as dire as everybody has thought it could have been. So I think that is an important part of messaging as well.
Yes, the other part of the messaging that I keep saying is we were saying learning loss, but we've been in school all year.
Right.
We've been here and we we did have a year of school. And we've all felt it together, so we don't want to say that this year didn't happen. It's been an important year and some of the most important learning that we've had.
Thank you, Mr. Tranberg. Dr. Ellie, anything else with respect to the school updates?
I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Very good. Thank you all. Thank you all for the questions, comments, and the dialogue. Moving on to discussion and possible action on elementary parent conference days for the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two school year. Mr. Tranberg.
Yes, there's a memo in your packet that proposes conference dates following the first trimester and second trimester progress reports. This was done as it always is, just by counting the number of days in the year and dividing accordingly. I I worked with principals and also ran this by the DEA to discuss any potential concerns. And everyone was in support of these dates. The only other piece that's not mentioned in this memo that's worth planting a seed is what's come back to us overwhelmingly and we're hearing in the conversations and and then the surveys that are coming back are please keep at least an option for those Zoom meetings to happen, the conferences to happen via Zoom, because some parents who've never been able to attend before were able to attend. So at least that's an option to continue that practice. And this also represents the the evening conference for the second trimester as we did for the first time this year.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Parent.
Hey, I was going to ask you if remote a Zoom meeting would be possible, because I've also heard the same, that people are thrilled that that has been an option and that both parents can attend if if needed and or wanted. What curious about the rationale of having an evening conference for the second conference instead of the first? I was wondering why that was chosen.
For your second semester? Ever since ever since the last spring.
Yeah, is that a is that a contract that they thank you.
Good. Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, Mrs. McCann.
Did you, you mentioned that the Zoom conferencing was meant that some people could attend who hadn't historically. Did we find that to be the case also with the evening conferences? Because I I know there has been historically a lot of discussion about working parents. Was was it, were they particularly well attended?
Yes, the evening conferences were less so than the afternoon conferences. I think whoever could tried to do them in the day.
Okay.
But they were well enough attended that
Okay.
I think we need some more regular year data to before we revisit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCann. Good. Can we move forward on a motion to approve elementary parent conference days for the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two school year for Mr. Tranberg's memorandum dated April twenty third, two thousand twenty one? Mrs. Stein makes a motion, Mr. Brown seconds. All those in favor? That is unanimous, so moving forward with the approved elementary parent conference days for the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two. Thank you. Moving on to discussion on March two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one, financial report and possible action on those budget transfers. Mr. Roodel.
So this is the financial report through March. We are forecasting a year end balance of one million one hundred and forty six thousand eight hundred and thirty six dollars, one point one percent. The general education RCs make up just over four hundred thousand to the positive. Special education RCs make up just over seven hundred and sixty eight thousand to the positive. And the reopening expenditures are negative point three thousand seven sixty eight. And there are a couple of transfers to address that tonight. Overall, you can see that total spending for COVID reopening was about three point five million. We got grants in the amount of one million seventy eight thousand. We have had transfers total of almost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we did receive that supplemental appropriation for the one point seven. Some small changes to the reopening expenditures from last month. Costs for the running the vaccine clinic, pay our nurses to use for shots. Some additional custodial overtime, small positive balance in one staff, a little bit of money in plexiglass purchased and additional usage of the YMCA primarily for some changes from the prior month. Forecast of eight hundred and seven thousand. The primary difference is an increase in excess cost. We are forecasting reimbursement of eighty point seven percent. The state did issue updated estimated revenues indicating that it would be eighty point three one percent or about a half a percent less than the forecast. So that would end up being about fourteen thousand dollars less in revenue, and so that will be reflected in April. Some additional salary savings for some vacant program coordinator position. Some savings in diesel fuel from less bus runs, some small amount of savings in materials and equipment. District legal fees trending lower, tuition reimbursement, workers' comp. Then again, some of those COVID expenditures I mentioned earlier, the plexiglass, the YMCA, the vaccine clinic. ELP tuition, we had some students withdraw, and then a little bit of an increase in out of district. Salaries overall are positive three hundred and seventy four thousand dollar. Interns, clubs, and councils remain positive as they have in the past. Salary savings are about two hundred and seventy seven thousand. Contract support from favorable negotiations with non cert contracts. And then again, those reopening costs are negative sixteen thousand dollars. Operating expenditures are a positive four hundred and thirty five thousand. Going through some of them, legal fees are positive, about thirty five thousand dollars. Sports officials and athletic transportation are positive due to the short winter season. Small amount in tuition reimbursement, the adults in contracted services, some special transportation and tuition, and then again, a small amount of money in the COVID reopen. Fixed costs are a positive thirty nine thousand dollars. The forty six thousand dollars in regular transportation is primarily the diesel fuel savings I mentioned earlier. Property insurance, workers' comp, and then again, projection is slightly over in health insurance by about sixty five thousand, and then positive utilities. Equipment is pretty minimal at positive five hundred and seventy dollars. Revenue is a positive two hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars. And again, that's primarily due to excess costs, which you can see is forecasted to be about three hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars above budget. We will reflect that in April to be that eighty point three one. We'll drop that by about the sixteen thousand dollars. So there are four transfers we're requesting for approval. The first one is for eleven thousand one hundred and forty five dollars. That is for the vaccine clinic to pay the nurses who administer the shot. Twenty thousand dollars in custodial overtime, twenty eight hundred dollars in plexiglass repair, and then the four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars for YMCA usage. All the funds coming from savings and diesel.
Thank you, Mr. Roodel. We had a finance committee meeting to review this, but I will open it up to board questions and comments. Mrs. Ritchie.
After our meeting, I I had asked for more specific detail on the expenses related to the COVID vaccine clinic. Do you have that information available?
Yep, we did include that in the package. So there were two clinics. The first one, there was eight nurses and one LPN. They work about seventy five, seventy five hours, paying about fifty one hundred dollars. And then vaccine clinic two, there were ten nurses and one LPN who administered vaccines to staff, and they worked about seventy six hours. So in total, is that eleven thousand one hundred and forty five dollars? We did confirm with Alicia that there would not be any of our nurses working at the ward and trailer clinic.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Roodel. Mrs. Otten.
So we discussed at the finance committee meeting, using S two to pay down some of our costs because it had come in right after break. And can we just discuss kind of the rationale of doing that? That grant, as I asked, expires September two thousand twenty two. Rather than taking some money out of surplus in case we need that grant money later. And it could be that we're relying on federal grants after that, but just so we can all understand why and how.
Sure. Um, so we did have to apply, and we have to state what we're going to use it for. So the application did include the teachers that we funded out of COVID this year, some PPE expenditures. So that grant has been approved, so we would have to draw down on that. One of the things we discussed when we went for the supplemental appropriation was to use this grant to offset some of that cost. The American Rescue Act, which is the nine hundred and sixty four thousand dollars that we are pending an award for, would be what we'd be looking at for fund next year for expenditures if we have them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Otten. Mrs. Ritchie.
This is something that I flagged during the finance committee meeting is the food services account. And it's an unusual year, and usually that's a self funding account. And so I'm just, that's something that's, as we move forward in the year, I want to keep an eye on to make sure that we have an appropriate balance at the end of this fiscal year to start next year. And so I just wanted to make mention of that in this meeting as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Any other questions or comments with regard to the financial report? Good, thank you. We will move forward with the motion to approve the proposed March budget transfers. Mrs. Stein, second by Mrs. Parent, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Roodel. We'll move forward with discussion and action on recommendation of the third party administrator for the four fifty seven B plan. Mr. Roodel.
So this is largely procedural in nature. We do offer employees the ability to shelter wages in a four oh three B or four fifty seven up to the IRS limit. The district does use Omni Group to administer its four oh three B plan and then uses Omni Group to do remittance for its four fifty seven B. But we do not use the Omni Group to administer our four fifty seven B and instead use CASBO. We don't have many employees, we only have four employees who actually participate in the four fifty seven plan. It would be beneficial to have both the remittance and the administration of both of those plans under one group. It does take the risk and liability off the district, which we currently do not have with the CASBO plan. So we are recommending making a move to use our four oh three B and four fifty seven B with the Omni Group. So we do need a board resolution approving that. Since the CASBO plan currently has the previous finance director's name on it, we would also just need a motion to remove his name and then place my name on it and then move that plan document over to the Omni.
Thank you, Mr. Roodel. Any questions or comments on the action on the recommendation of third party administrator for the four fifty seven B plan? Yes, Mrs. McCann.
Rich, can we just clarify what you said from a from a process perspective just now? Did you just indicate that we need two motions?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we need one motion to approve us going with the Omni Group.
Okay.
And then another motion removing the previous finance director's name on the same document and then having
Okay, so how would you word the second motion?
A motion to approve naming myself the administrator in charge of the four fifty seven plan. What's on the document?
Yeah.
Okay.
You you wanted to take it from the back.
Yep, good. Thank you, Mr. Roodel. Okay, so we'll move forward. So may have a motion where the board hereby hires the Omni Group effective May first, two thousand twenty one to administer the Darian Public Schools four fifty seven B plan as the third party administrator for the plan. Motion, Mrs. Stein, Mr. Brown, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. May have a motion where the board hereby changes the employee of the board who is designated as the administrator of the plan for the board from Michael Feeney to Richard Roodel. And as such, Richard Roodel shall be responsible for overseeing plan administration and operations of the plan. May have a motion, Mr. Seeny, second by Mr. Brown, all those in favor? Thank you. May have a motion that Richard Roodel is hereby authorized and directed in the name of and on behalf of the board to execute and deliver all applicable plan documents, amendments, and service agreements for the four fifty seven B plan and to do all other things, including the execution of any other documents, notices, agreements, certificates, and instruments necessary or appropriate to implement the aforementioned resolutions with respect to the four fifty seven plan and to do or cause to be done in any and all such other acts and things, including but not limited to the execution of any other necessary documents setting forth the terms and conditions of the services to be provided by the Omni Group to the four fifty seven B plan. Mr. Brown makes a motion, Mr. Maroney seconds it, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Jill, do you have this right in front of you there? Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Roodel. Thank you, everyone. Yes.
Yes, I have it.
Yep.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to further discussion and action on proposed Board of Education policies, twenty seven hundred retention of electronic records and information, twenty eight hundred holes on the destruction of electronic information and paper records, thirty one seventy five code of conduct governing procurements under a federal law. Mrs. Stein and Mrs. Seiny.
I would say if there's no further questions or comments, I didn't receive any. We're ready to vote on these and move forward.
I will open it up to board questions or comments if anyone's reviewed this. Okay, good, thank you. Then I will move forward with a motion to approve the proposed Board of Education policies, twenty seven hundred retention of electronic records and information, twenty eight hundred holes on the destruction of electronic information. 2800 Holes on the Destruction of Electronic Information and Paper Records, 3175 Code of Conduct Governing Procurements Under a Federal Award. I have a motion to approve that. Mrs. Parent, second by Mrs. Akman, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. We will move forward to, uh, further discussion and action on the proposed, uh, sorry. Move forward with the PAR, the Personal, um, Action Report. Mrs. Seiny.
So this is a pretty impressive report tonight, but as we discussed with you, these are people, for the most part, who were on one-year contracts, which expired at the end of the year. They resigned instead of being non-renewed, and as we continue to look at our elementary enrollment and the sections at the high school, we hope to hire many of them back.
Okay, thank you. Any other further comments or questions? Mrs. Akman.
So if we hope to hire them back, are we planning on having additional teachers due to social distancing?
So apparently, uh, one of the considerations, uh, for improving education and improving what the grant says on the last, right? Would be the social, uh, distance and the spacing, which potentially would require new teachers. I'm still pondering that, to be honest with you, but the latest, as we're talking about, the latest news of pivot and the whole space and type of things, I'm still pondering that at the moment. That's one of the considerations. Uh, it's not definitely yet, and it has to be approved through here, so now that we've got the, the remote learning table or off the table, so to speak, uh, it's an opportunity to describe that, but at the next meeting, I'll, I'll be ready to sort of share what the latest thoughts are of the scope of next year.
Thank you.
Dr. Hadley, can I just, I didn't mean, uh, I was just looking at the elementary moment with Rich today. We, we laid off 11 elementary school te, I mean, they resigned instead of being non-renewed. Some were COVID sections, but some were also replacing teachers on leave, and those teachers didn't return. So we will have openings and that, so I'm not, I'm not even going to need to wait for Dr. Hadley to make that determination to hire some back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Action on accepting the PAR report. Mrs. Akman, second by Mrs. Stein, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Michelle, we will move to public comment.
If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participant icon on the bottom of your DM screen. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you were unmuted for public comment. You will have up to three minutes to comment. There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. I may have a motion to adjourn. Uh, Mr. Seeny, second by Mrs. Stein, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you.